Thank y'all for being here tonight. This is the formal city council meeting for Thursday, August 8th. If y'all wouldn't mind bowing your heads and Mr. Garrett, would you mind leading us in the invocation?
Let's pray. Dear heavenly Father, thank you for bringing us together tonight. Watch over us. Be with the citizens of this community. Be with this council. Let us be with us as we make our decisions. Thank you for coming to this earth down across fire sins, Lord, in your name we do pray.
Amen. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First up, we have some new team members. Chief, I'll ask you to, coming up, I think most of them are from your team today.
Certainly great to hear most of them are from my team here. So we certainly have a great staff at our agency and we're happy to kind of present four additional members to our already exceptional staff that we have here. So first one we have is Grayson Bedwell, so we'll let her stand so that you can kind of see her. She's a certified officer that came in. She's got about four and a half years law enforcement experience and joined us about nine days ago, if I'm my math's correct, here as well. So she'll be going through training here and then she'll be hitting our streets here very soon. We also have Diego Loyola that's here. He is an uncertified officer, so he'll be soon starting training up once the Criminal Justice Academy opens back up from all the weather that they've had. We have Dana Potter, who is part of our great telecommunications staff that we have. She's been here about four weeks now and doing well in her training to be able to come a solo telecommunicator. And the last we have is Chad Richardson. He was selected to be our police major, so he's the individual who kind of works hand in hand with me, second in command of our agency here. He comes from Greer, has about 24 years of law enforcement experience that will be certainly a benefit to our agency and our city. Thank you all. Make sure, welcome to the team, y'all.
We have a couple of presentations. Mr. Bell, are you prepared for?
For the audit or the year? Yeah.
Okay. It's a big crowd. You couldn't see everybody. Well, first up, we have our audit presentation. Good evening. Thank you for being here.
Yes, sir. Thank you for having me. My name's Grant Davis and I'm a partner with Malden Jenkins and we've concluded the audit of the city for its year ended 2023. And just to kind of give you some highlights here for the year, we've ultimately issued unmodified opinions on the city's financial statements, which really is not glamorous language, but it's the only real acceptable result in a financial statement audit. So again, an unmodified opinion on the financial statements. You'll note, once you receive the final copies of the document, we've ultimately issued three reports. The first is at the very beginning. That's what I was just referring to, our opinion on the financial statements. We've also issued a report on internal controls and compliance with laws, regulations, grant agreements, things of that nature. That report is not designed to offer an opinion, but to provide what we call negative assurance, which is to say that we, as a part of conducting our audit in accordance with government auditing standards, if we note any deficiencies in internal controls or noncompliance, we're required to communicate those things to you all. We did note two deficiencies in internal controls. One related to the recording of capital assets and one related to revenue recognition. The revenue recognition item is really a little bit unique. It's related to the city's receipt and recording of the federal coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds. Just briefly, in the past, that was all recognized as revenue. When you received it, it's technically not supposed to be recognized as revenue until you spend it. And that's a little counterintuitive, but that's what the GASB, the standard setting body for governments has dictated. So we had to make an adjustment for that. So you'll see ultimately an unearned revenue, which is in the form of a liability on the balance sheet. And that simply is just recognized as you spend the money. And it's basically demonstrating that if you don't spend it in the required timeframe, you gotta give it back. So that's really all that is. And then the third and final report that we've issued is a single audit report. So anytime you spend over $750,000 in federally sourced monies, it triggers a compliance audit relative to that program. We audited the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds program. And I'm happy to say that's also an unmodified opinion, so no internal control deficiencies or instances of noncompliance were identified as a result of that audit. But just a few financial highlights that I always try to communicate as a part of doing these. The city ended the year with about $18.8 million in cash and investments. Now that's split between various funds. About 18, excuse me, about 5.4 of that $18.8 million is restricted cash for things like capital projects and debt service, things of that nature. If you look specifically at the general fund, the general fund had assets of about $6.6 million and about 4.1 of that was cash. And I know I'm moving fast, so if y'all have questions, please holler out. But about 4.1 of $6.6 million was cash in the general fund. Liability in the general fund, about $1 million. That gives you fund balance of about $5.6 million. The vast majority of that, five and a half million of the 5.6 is unassigned, which is essentially available for appropriation. If you look at that as just a, or in light of your, the spending of the general fund, the general fund had revenues of about $11.5 million and expenditures of about $13.6. Just some simple math, if you divide the expenditures of $13.6 divided by 12 months, that gives you about $1.1 million a month in terms of spending. So the general fund was spending about $1 million a month or a little bit more. And if you take that spending per month as a portion of fund balance, it means you got about five months of fund balance on hand, which ultimately is a pretty healthy place to be. To be at June 30th, which is ultimately oftentimes for governments, a pretty lean time of year in terms of where you get your big receipts. You think about when property taxes come in and business licenses and the cyclical nature of those receipts, to be at June 30th and to have that kind of a cushion, so to speak, to get you back around to when you get into your heavy revenue seasons is, again, I think a healthy place to be. And ultimately, the general fund increased its fund balance from the prior year by about $200,000. So I think all that's very positive. And I know that's real high level. I'm happy to answer any questions or go into more detail if you'd like. But again, clean reports from our perspective with this audit.
Thank you so much. Any questions or comments? Just want to thank our team for their work in this process and thank you so much.
Thank you.
We have a couple of other presentations. Mr. Bell, I guess I'll turn it over to you to facilitate.
Sorry, I have a knee injury, so I'm hobbling. It's not a vibrant knee injury. It's one where I twisted it just walking. So I'm Jenny Boweare, State Coordinator for Main Street, South Carolina, joined by Jonathan Irick, who is Staff Associate. We support the statewide Main Street program, of which Main Street Fountain Inn is a participant in. Tonight, we are delighted to share this big presentation. Main Street, South Carolina's annual awards program celebrates exceptional entrepreneurs, organizations, and preservationists in designated Main Street communities across the state. This awards program consists of categories that embody the Main Street four-point approach. Main Street is dope. Easy way to remember it. Design, organization, promotion, and economic vitality. Today, we are presenting Fountain Inn, the 2024 Award focused on Economic Vitality, Outstanding Business Development Program. This is for your Main Street Improvement Grant Program. This award honors projects that enhance business-friendly environments in Main Street communities, supporting a thriving market of diverse and locally owned establishments. At a time when Fountain Inn businesses were struggling to survive through the COVID-19 pandemic, city leaders resolved to support local merchants and build a better downtown district through the Main Street Improvement Grant Program. The program provided for reimbursements of up to $20,000 through an outdoor expansion and beautification grant, addressing spaces intended for public use, a facade improvement grant of up to $10,000, and an outdoor seating and accessories for a tourism and hospitality business grant of up to $4,000. The city funded the grants through $250,000 from its one-time ARPA allotment, awarding 33 individual grants in 2022 and 2023 for everything from removal of slipcover facades, window replacements and awnings, to parking and lighting improvements. With Fountain Inn growing and downtown properties difficult to find for business owners, the city has approved streetscape improvements further south of the district's central core. Thank you, Main Street Fountain Inn and the City of Fountain Inn for your strategic partnership. This award-winning program's impact is far-reaching and is a great example of a strong business development initiative. The plaque reads, "2024 Main Street Inspiration Award Presented to City of Fountain Inn for Outstanding Business Development, Main Street Grant Program, in recognition of an innovative program that provides small business advocacy and support."
Thank you, Jenny. Thank you, Jonathan. Credit where credit's due on this, I want to thank our team led by Martin, who run the Main Street program, but also the grant program, and our finance department for processing everything. I know this idea sort of birthed out of, we have an economic development incentive ordinance that was passed in the start of COVID and we all wanted to make sure we did something for smaller businesses that were reinvesting in our community. And we're happy to continue funding this program with general fund dollars in this year's budget. Thank you, Jenny. And I think we'll probably do a picture of both awards, not to be too proud, but we have two awards. We'll do both of them at the same time. Mr. Bell? Or Naomi? Ms. Reed, welcome back. Stay as long as you'd like.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank y'all for having me here. It's an honor to be back in Fountain Inn to present this award to you. For those of you that don't know, my name's Naomi Reed. I'm one of the field service managers with the Municipal Association. We, you know, support cities and towns across the state of South Carolina. But tonight, I'm here to celebrate alongside with Fountain Inn on winning the 2024 Municipal Achievement Award. And I know that that has been something on Sean's heart for a long time, but also something that Fountain Inn would be really proud of. The project that the award was recognized for was the Sanctified Hill Project. I did have a video prepared by the association, if we have that keyed up, and then I'll be back up here to present the award. Thank you.
Population category, 10,000-1 to 20,000, City of Fountain Inn. Located in Fountain Inn's historically black community, Sanctified Hill Park suffered from a legacy of black. Once an unofficial town dumb, soil tests revealed layers of trash beneath the surface. In the 1970s, the city used dirt to cap the trash and added basic amenities. Even so, the park remained a symbol of the negligible investment of dentists and developed their reputation for gang activity and crime.
Sanctified Hill Park has a very long, complicated history in Fountain Inn. Sanctified Hill is our historically African-American community in Fountain Inn. So it's a mill village and over time, the field in Sanctified Hill became an unofficial town dumb. And it took the city too long to recognize that that's a problem. I think this is one of the proudest projects that I've been able to be a part of as mayor because of what this park means to the Sanctified Hill community. And also, I'm proud that the city stepped up and did what it should have been doing the whole time, and that's caring for our neighborhood park. And my caring for that park, caring for that neighborhood.
Golden Beach Baptist Church became an early leader for restoring the park, taking on many's responsibilities. In 2020, the city prioritized its revitalization, driven by a steering committee with the church and other stakeholders, kicking off the process with a block party.
I believe my fellow peers were better together. And so I think it takes community, I think it takes government, I take two things, the digital organizations, all coming together to work for one common cause, and that's to make our city and community better. And it's very important to have those partnerships with us with the outcome of something we're not able to get done. And if it wasn't for the partnership with the city and with the government, we wouldn't have the park that we have. We wouldn't have a lot of the things that we have in our city. So I think it's very important for we put aside our pride and put aside our ideals, everybody comes to the table for the common goal, which is to make this city better than what it is.
The grand reopening of the park came in May of 2023. The park is now a vibrant public space that's home to modern playground equipment, including a playground for younger children and another for older children. Two basketball courts, a paved walk-in path, a large lawn, restrooms, and two picnic booths. Strategic planning allowed for efficient execution of most of the refurbishment work in the initial phase of the project, using $2.5 million in state funding and additional contributions for the Lawrence County American Rescue Plan Act funds and capital sales tax revenue. The transformation of Sanctified Hill Park addressed longstanding historical enemies, promoted inclusivity, and bolstered community pride. Population category, 10,000-1 to 20,000.
We can watch it again. That's all right.
You just won't see that.
Yeah, I made that shot. I promise I made that shot.
As I say, we learned that the mayor's got skills, so. I know that this was a project and a labor of love across city staff, community leaders, and that's one thing that these awards do. They highlight the community partnerships across the state. And we want to make sure that, people know that everyone can build a park, but it takes a community to build a great one. And so on behalf of the Municipal Association, I want to say congratulations on winning the 2024 Municipal Association Achievement Award.
Thank you. Thank y'all. I want to thank Councilmember Mayor Protem Don and Councilman Klimmer. We were, and Pastor Williams were able to receive that award formally at our annual meeting for the association this year. Thank y'all for recognizing us and thanks to staff for submitting all the information for it.
Thank y'all.
Thank you. Next up, we'll move on to public forum. We have people signed up to speak. We do have, you'll have three minutes to speak. We're trying something new out. We have a timer situation. Let me know how it works with y'all. I just, we had, we had an instance where somebody couldn't hear the buzzer going off on Elizabeth's phone one day and I felt really bad about that. So we have some visual cues, but we'll give y'all a grace of 30 seconds after as well. But first up is Ms. Susan Stewart.
I'll try to talk fast. I'm Susan Stewart and I was born in Fountain Inn, inside the city limits. But I own a portion of a 400-plus acre farm that continuously operated by seven generations of Stewarts, both men and women, since 1844 in our community. That community would soon become Fountain Inn. I'm here tonight with concerns about the proposed development at Jones and Durbin Roads that under the current proposal can contribute to the irreparable destruction of the culture, the history, the livelihoods of agriculture, business people, and our small family farmers, and to the lifestyles of those who choose to pursue lifelong commitments to protecting our forest, our waterways, our farms, our wildlife, and the foundations of the community that the rural environment provides. I'm not opposed to growth and development. It's inevitable. It's going to come down I-385. I agree that a property owner has a right to sell their property for the best market return that they can receive. I am opposed to ill-planned and improperly placed developments that do not fit in with the current defined and identified land use for that area. The proposed development is for an area that is clearly agricultural, it's forested, it's waterway blessed, it's peppered with indigenous human artifacts and populated by natural wildlife and flora that cannot be rebuilt, restored, or replicated. It's a South Carolina treasure. It's a Fountain Inn treasure that's at risk of disappearing as this land grab to build dense developments occurs, and now they include commercial components that creep down into our area. We country-loving residents choose to live away from density, but we shop, we recreate, we educate, and we support the City of Fountain Inn with our business, our social interactions, and our dollars, as we have done for decades and we've done for generations. We don't need commercial convenience of close proximity. We plan our trips to town. The inconsistency between the comp plan future land use map for our area and the placement of a multi-use residential commercial development is striking. I'm asking that you not create a new community neighborhood with the small lot concept in an area where one does not currently exist and where the existing community does not want it. We want to save and preserve our farmland. We want to retain what we have of our rural environment. We want to continue to farm. Otherwise, you can say goodbye to your local beef, pork, hay, and other food farm crops. You can say goodbye to those local horse-riding lessons for your children. My family is not the only one who's directly losing their farm operations and lifestyle, and many of those people are here tonight, founders of Fountain Inn. There are the Currys, the Willis's, the Hunts, the Garrison's, the Sullivan's, the Joneses, the Woods, the Abercrumbys, the Garrets, the Goodwins, the Paydens, the Armstrongs, the Gilliland's, the Thompsons, the Lollises, the Stiles, the Riddles, and so many more. Between the influx of dense developments, the lack of infrastructure to support the growth, and the uninformed decisions to expand into obvious natural and rural areas, I see no other outcome but farmland loss for our area. Let that weigh on your conscience. Revisit your comp plan, drive down our roads, and truly understand the existing land use of this area. We are pastureland forests, spring-fed ponds and waterways, where horses, beef cattle, corn, grazing hay, soybeans, hills, valleys, creeks, fishing holes, riding trails, deer, turkey, rabbits, owls, hogs, foxes, raccoons, skunks, chickens, pigs, sheep, and good land-loving people and patrons of Main Street Fountain Inn do not add to the destruction of our lifestyle choice and the community culture we work to preserve. I'll close with this, and this is a quote. "Large tracts of land are being sold by families to developers. We always have to ask the question, what is the appropriate role that the government can and should play in that conversation? We don't want to impede the rights of property owners regardless of who owns that piece of property. We don't want to impede a family's right to sell their property to whom they like at whatever price the market allows them to sell it for or sell it at. But at the same time, when something is developed, we want to be sure it reflects the character of the community." Those words are from Mayor McClear from an interview on November 3rd, 2022, in the Greenville Business Magazine. Take that to heart. Plan this development for a more appropriate area. And please, save our farmland.
Thank you, sir. Accidentally skipped over somebody who had signed up earlier, Ms. Debbie Alphen. Sorry, Debbie.
Thank you. I'm Debbie Alphen with the Yacht Center here in Fountain Inn. And I still want to take this time to praise Fountain Inn. I was, I know the growth that we have here and what it has become. I've lived in Fountain Inn pretty much all my life, so I remember when the only fast food that we had, that we called it fast food, was a Bantam Chef back behind Belk's. And you went up, walked up, gave them your order, went back and sent your car to it was ready. So we've come a long way in the fast food industry in Fountain Inn. And also, I think Albertson's Drug Store was our first after-school daycare, because the kids walked from the elementary school down to Albertson's and waited for their parents to come pick them up in the afternoon. So I've seen the growth in Fountain Inn and have been privileged to be a part of it. I'm here tonight to talk to you about what we call the hidden gem of Fountain Inn. And we no longer want to be that hidden gem in Fountain Inn. We want to shine. We want people to know that we're here. As I told somebody earlier, we want people to show up. If you show up, we'll show out. And we have a great show going at the Performing Arts Center right now. It's called Motown. And Motown has been one of the most attended and praised shows that we have had here. We went through a lot like everyone else. We survived the new beginning and we survived COVID. So we're still here and we're going strong. So I wanted to tell you a little bit, first, I want to invite you all to be our guests at the Motown Show that we are having currently. And we want to call that this weekend is be our guests. The Yacht Center for Performing Art invites you to join us for Motown with City Appreciation Weekend. We appreciate everything that our council and our policemen and our firefighters and our clerks and our sanitation department and everything does for the city. That's why the city receives the rewards that you have received tonight, and we're proud to be a part of Fountain Inn. So we have seats reserved for the entire city plus one guest for this weekend, and you have your choice of Friday, Saturday, or Sunday shows. So come experience what we're all about. And let me tell you a little bit, some of the reviews we got this week was outstanding. We had people come that had never been to Fountain Inn before, never been to the Yacht Center before. And this is what we want people to know about our town. It said, "I've only been living in Fountain Inn for a little over two months. This evening, my wife and I caught the Motown Show. It was phenomenal. The singers, the dancers, the production was just perfect. We were enthralled, worthy of Broadway." And we got many, many of those, if you go on Facebook page and look at that. Another gentleman said that he lived in the Big Apple. He lived in New York. He saw shows on and off Broadway. And the performance he saw last night would rival some of the musical concerts in the Big Apple. Moreover, to think that we could have such a dynamic and exhilarating experience with minutes away from our Fountain Inn home at such a modest ticket's price, it's truly amazing. So we invite you all to come see what we're all about and what we have. And as we speak right now, we have developed a children's theater, which has been unbelievable. And tonight, we have auditions for Frozen. Well, we have about 30 people to cast in Frozen. At the center right now, we have 108 children there to audition for Frozen. So we invite you to come see what we're all about and join us at the Yacht Center. And we appreciate your support and we want to be a part of what Fountain Inn's all about and Fountain Inn shining. So thank you. And I'm going to leave this with you, so you'll have your invitation and a booklet to show you what the Yacht Center is having this weekend. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Debbie.
Thank you, Debbie.
Dr. Thomas Johnson.
Thank you for the opportunity to come speak before you tonight. I'm not used to being on the clock. Maybe we need Jeopardy music or something. I'm a resident of the Durbin Oaks subdivision and I'm here to express my concerns for the proposed development at the corner of Durbin Road and Jones Road. I wrote a letter to Councilman Garrett outlining my concerns. I hope he shares that letter with you because, quite honestly, my concerns would take more than three minutes to share with you. Let me just say that I think these concerns can be categorized into two areas. One is traffic and the other is quality of life issues. According to the traffic analysis report done by DOT for this area, the current traffic infrastructure is insufficient to support this development. The only solution proposed in this assessment is a proposed, and there's an acronym, GPAT or something like that. I don't know what that stands for. But, you know, again, that's a proposal. It's not a done deal. And absent that proposed project, there is no other solution. And so I'd be very leery about moving forward with this development until we know for sure that DOT is going to pony up on their end to ensure the infrastructure is correct. Their proposal only addresses Durbin Road. There's nothing for Jones Road outlined in this assessment. If you've been on Jones Road, you know it's a substandard road. If you've been on Jones Road, you know it's a substandard road. It's not wide enough for commercial vehicles to pass. It's really just a maze of potholes that have been patched over. There's no shoulder, no drainage, there's not even lane markings. I'm also concerned that you currently have two subdivisions fronting this road. You have our subdivision and you have Winterbrook. So you have a fair amount of traffic at peak traffic times. Putting another development in there is just going to exacerbate the problem. There are three access points for the proposed development that front Jones Road, so that would probably be the primary area that this subdivision would let out onto. So you're adding a lot of traffic on a road that, quite honestly, is not built to handle it. The other issue are issues that fall under the quality of life, probably stem primarily from the commercial development aspect of it. I get it that there are no vendors or businesses that have signed up for this commercial area yet, or at least I assume they haven't. But anyway, if you look at the site plan, the developers have proposed a 25-foot buffer zone between this commercial area and the houses they intend to build. There is no buffer zone between this commercial area and our neighborhood. There is nothing there to abate the noise and light pollution that would come from the commercial area into our neighborhood. And so with that, you know, we have concerns. Nobody wants parking lot lights shining in their bedroom at night, but, you know, there's nothing there that looks like it's going to protect our neighborhood. I realize I'm out of time. I hope you get a chance to read my letter and look at the other concerns I have. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Nicholas Myers.
Good evening, council. Thank you for your time tonight. My name is Nicholas Myers, and I work for the builder and developer on this project on Durbin Road, Pulte Homes. I won't dive, you know, too far into the details of the project, knowing that you guys have a packet with a lot of information in there. I really just wanted to introduce myself. If you have any questions at the end of this, you know, me along with some members of my team are here, and we would, we'd be happy to answer any questions that council has, whether it's, you know, traffic, stormwater, what have you. So thank you again for your time, and just wanted to introduce myself, and thank you.
Thank you. Richard Jones.
I'm Dick Jones from Greenville. Grew up in Easely, but I spent every Sunday, as I remember as a small child, in Fountain Inn with my Uncle Conway Jones and Aunt Lila. We had a big time right across from the, on Main Street, I guess, the city hall, right across. We, we had, it was like a circus. We rode ponies and carts and had the greatest time. And my father, who was Ab Jones', is the youngest child of Mr. T.E., who lived over here on Gulliver. So to me, Fountain Inn was where I really grew up, and I've been in Greenville, as I say, practicing law. And I told everybody when I was at the planning meeting, I was not a developer. I was a retired lawyer. And I think I heard somebody behind me whisper, "Oh, my goodness, that's worse." But I, I do appreciate what y'all do. I know the time and effort that's involved in this type thing, and unfortunately, people have different points of view. But I will say that this property that I have, and actually, it belongs to my three adult children, and I've just been appointed to take care of it for them. But the, the way that I have seen it and had it looked at was that the other developments around it have sort of put this land in line for development. I, I don't think, I used to farm it some, and it's hard to get out there with, like it is now, and I think the highest or best use of it is for development. And I do believe in this country and in this area, we are way behind in homes for people. And I know one thing, Mr. Conway always thought, if a person owned their own home, it really generated more responsibility for. And I hate that the young people can't seem, and I say that being young, anything under about 78, but I hate that they can't seem to afford a home, and the idea here is to have some homes that are available, and I hope we get this economy turned around. But we have worked to try to have these homes in a quality fashion, built in a quality fashion, and I understand there are questions about traffic, but it seems to me, those are problems that are going to have to be dealt with. We've worked through the, the plan that the city has and believe we're in compliance with that. So if there are any questions, these folks are here tonight to make sure that we try to answer them for you, but I appreciate your attention.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Ashley Riddle.
Good evening, council. How are you guys doing? I want to start off by saying thank you, council, for your service. It's a thankless job. It's a tough job. You're under pressure at times, but I do, I do acknowledge that you're, you're good guys, and I've talked to all of you, and I appreciate your time, and I thank you very much. Of course, I'm Ashley Riddle, and I'm a Fountain Inn resident. I've been living in the city limits for almost 41 years and outside the city limits the rest of the time down on, down Durbin Road. My wife and I, Pam, own Solid Rock Stables, and we board a bunch of horses down there, and that's our, that's our livelihood. It's important to us. So I'm here as a resident, but I'm also here as a board member of the Lawrence Residents for Quality Rural Living LLC. We have several board members present in the room tonight, and we started our little LLC a couple of years ago when Lawrence County just decided they were going to build 1,000 houses beside Nancy Garrison and Joel and Tanya Shorkey's home. One, a cattle operation. The other is she trains barrel horses, and they have a lot of horses there. So they decided they were just going to build 1,000 houses right beside them without notification. So we got busy going to the meetings, and we found the need to organize. We're feeling pressure now. We feel like we're fighting a two-front war. We're, we're feeling pressure from Lawrence County. We're feeling pressure from Fountain Inn now wanting to annex down the road. Growth is coming, right? When I ran for council in '97, I ran for smart growth, right? We all knew it was coming. It was, it wasn't there at that time, but we all knew it was coming, didn't we, Jay? We knew it was coming, we just didn't know when. The rest of you guys, I imagine, in your campaign said something like, "Smart growth", right? It's coming. Let's be smart about it. This is not smart. I'm sorry, Mr. Jones. I appreciate you. I know you have a right to sell and develop, sir, but I would like to speak to one thing that he said. Oh, my time's getting away. We got 5,000 homes going up right now. We got plenty of homes, guys. Just be patient a little bit. But people don't want this. People don't want the commercial. I don't want the commercial. Let's get the lots bigger, or here's, here's a thought. Let's say no, right? You guys, I love you. I love you, but I hear yes a lot. I hear yes a lot. You can get in more trouble saying yes than you can no, can't you, Joey? But I would like, I would like to say, they've spent a lot of time and a lot of money on this plan, right? Okay, well, let's deny it the way, the way it's written. We don't want the commercial. Come on. This is country, man. So let's, let's deny it as written. Let's please not table it. Let's please not negotiate an outcome. Let's just make, send them back to the drawing board and come back with a plan we can all live with. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Riddle. Except for Chrissy Drake.
Good evening. Chrissy Drake with Blue Water Civil Design. I'm here to speak on behalf of PZ 2024-03. I also hope this is the last time y'all have to see my face on this project. It's been about a year working with you guys. Just to give you a reminder, this is that parcel off of Main Street that's going to have the right-in, 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 right-out entrance. We are rezoning to an FRD, so we gave you guys a lot of flexibility on determining materials and what we were going to put there, and ended up deciding having that commercial building up front with the storage at the back. I do know that you guys were given some latest renderings. That's been the only big change from last meeting to this one, where we incorporated a lot more brick on the storage. So I know that was a question that came up recently, but if you, when we come up to unfinished business, if anyone has any questions, we have the developer, the engineer, and the architects all here, so we're able to answer any questions that you guys might have.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Chrissy.
Nancy Garrison.
Hi, of course, I'm Nancy Garrison. I just want to speak briefly as I can and get through the timer, too. First, I want to say something that was said to us at the Planning Commission meeting, that we can't tell these people that they can't sell their land, or, you know. None of us said anything about that. Not one person in opposition to this ever said that, "Can you please tell these people not to sell their land?" I mean, we know that, that, that is their right, and that can happen. And we have been knowing that something was going to happen with this land for quite some time because of the fact that it had a proposed subdivision sign on it right before our moratorium in Lawrence County, and then the new ordinance has happened. So we knew that it was coming. But I want to make a few references, and I want to talk just briefly on the environmental part. You do see a lot of wetlands through there, and I actually walked Mr. Sullivan's land with him the other day, and I was kind of astounded how everything does drain down towards his area and the little pond that he built, and the great concerns that he has with that, and our waterways and, and how much that's changed because we already have an influx of impervious surface that has occurred and what that's doing to South Durbin Creek, the flooding that we seen not too terrible long ago when we had a large rain greater than I'd ever seen. A friend said that she'd never seen it out of the banks, even when we had hurricane kind of rain, because of the amount of the impervious, impervious surface that's changed up above that area and how, you know, we know water drains down. The comprehensive plan, I want to make a few notes about that. So there were some pages and stuff like that that I brought up. It appears that the Planning Commission thinks this development meets the requirements of the comprehensive plan. I feel like they need to read more in the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan states on page 15 that it's to support a small town feel. The comprehensive plan also on 15, the objective is to support a balance in the housing needs. We have a tremendous amount of small lot, whether it's in the city, you've got town homes being built, all the ones right outside the city limits. We've got tons of that going on already. In, the comprehensive plan states on page 18 and 19 that the residents want the following, but this development does not support the desires stated in the comprehensive plan. Houses with large yards, small town feel, and I don't know about the affordable part, but I don't think that these would be considered affordable housing. The comprehensive page 20 has a vision for the future, and this development does not support the vision. On the, the guiding vision on page 21 with seven principles, this development violates at least four of those guiding principles. On page 22 and 23 have the 10 next steps. Okay, there is a lot more. Not a lot more, but a little bit more.
I tried to give everyone their second's grace.
Okay, all right. So none of the, the development supports, you know, wait a minute, page 22 and 23 have the next steps. None of this development supports a comprehensive plan for growth. Under the existing land use, this development is a parachuting into agricultural areas. This is inconsistent with the surrounding environment, infrastructure, and the way of life. Under the future land use map, this development is, was done for low and medium-density residential and has a conservation overlay design all around this area. The development is a higher density and a commercial enterprise. Page 33 and 37 provide definition of low-density and conservation design overlay, and the development does not meet these. I'm going to, because I had a little bit more, so I'm going to, I'm going to stop there. But I want to just say, one thing that I heard that occurred in the Planning Commission meeting is how this, why this was being looked at to be annexed into the city, and it was stated by one of the members that this couldn't go through Lawrence County because we didn't have the mechanism for this kind of mixed use. So they've brought it to you, and that they understood this is what Fountain Inn wanted. Well, who in Fountain Inn told them this is what we wanted? Because I don't believe a commercial aspect of this belongs out there, the infrastructure and everything else that goes along with it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Garrison. Mr. Charles Greer.
How's it going, everybody? I just wanted to say that I'm also here with Nick to answer any questions, as well as Austin after me. Just didn't know if I needed to sign up or not to answer questions later. Thanks.
Thank you. Austin? Okay, thank you. Kay Hock.
I, I hate to do this. Oh, I hate public speaking. My name is Kay Hock. I live on Durbin Road. My husband and I, we returned back to the area after being gone for 30-plus years. We lived in Simpsonville for a while, but we wanted to move back out in the country. We always loved Fountain Inn. My husband used to work in Fountain Inn for PTI years ago. But anyway, we bought a house out four, four years ago on Durbin Road. The traffic is ridiculous now. When we bought there, it wasn't bad, but now we've had like a couple deaths already as far as accidents on Durbin Road. In front of our house, we've had three deers already killed. They fly up and down the road. At the planning meeting, some, one of the individuals said that they was talking to DOT, and they was under the impression or something that there was something in the works as far as improvement. Well, I was talking with a Nick, oh, gosh, anyway, he's got, I can give you the information. I got his phone number, personal phone number. He said that they gave no date. They have no plans for Durbin Road. It's like in the 30, number in the 30s as far as to do anything with. If it was like seven, you're talking about three or four years down the road. Now, you can call DOT and check with them, but they said there's no plans for Durbin Road. And I wish people would really start instead of taking, I shouldn't say developers, but word for it, really start checking, calling people, really check the facts before, you know, you approve something, really check. But I really would like to keep the, the atmosphere as far as Fountain Inn. I mean, that's the reason why we moved here, and we're too old to move again. Thank you.
Thank you. And Michelle Rinaldo.
Hi, thank you very much. I didn't make this very brief. My name is Michelle Grimaldo. I'll just tell you, I'm from San Diego, California, but I lived in South Carolina for 16 years and came back, was gone for 30 years, and moved back. I'm going to get emotional. I moved back here because of the beautiful life that I thought it would give us, because let me tell you, California's turned into a you-know-what hole, and you don't want this city to become what I came from, what I moved out of to come to a place that I thought was going to be rural. I lived, I moved to a rural place, six acres, to have around me the deer and the wildlife and all, and now I'm watching subdivision after subdivision in four years. In four years, it's exploded, and I'm still watching the infrastructure doing nothing. And understand that every single subdivision that has a home has three to four cars that are going to be in that one little, each person's home. How many more traffic are we looking at? Crime, everything else for that matter. But we're talking about, when you move out into a rural area, you know you're going to drive into the city to go to the grocery store. And I'm, somebody said it a minute ago, you make plans. And I understand that people say, "It's not us. We're going to end up having to raise taxes. Everything else is going to happen to us because of this development as fast as it's going." But we're just begging you, even though it might not affect you, because maybe you don't live in the areas that we do, but if it did, I think you would think differently. I think your heart would be set differently. You'd understand what everybody here is talking about, and they're begging you to please listen to us when we say, "Please, say no. Stop. Find a different way to make this work, and don't take away the beautiful life that we have all come here, and we've moved here to have." The only other thing I want to say, in one other meeting I was in, they were saying, I said, "Why can't you make the properties between each home bigger?" Well, that's not really good. I was in an area, we were very rural, but we all had to have at least one acre. You had to have at least one acre between lands, because we want to have our chickens, we want our kids to be able to run around the yards, we want to grow a vegetable garden if we want it, and we don't want to hand a tissue to our neighbor when they sneeze. So we are begging you to please listen to what these people are saying, it's from their heart, and they don't want their properties taken away and these big developments around them. We want to have our livestock in our homes. We want to keep it like it is. Move into the city, move to where Food Lion is, to give ourselves a nice little place for another grocery store or whatever. But we're just begging you to please, please, from your heart, listen to what these people are saying. If it affected you, you think you'd understand. Thank you very much for listening to me.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Moving on in the agenda, the consent agenda, which includes the minutes for our regular meeting on July 11th, 2024. Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Thank you, Mr. Clemmer. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Any questions or comments from the minutes? Hearing none in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. Mr. Bell, your brief report?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I do know we have firefighters watching tonight, and they have said that sometimes they can't hear me on YouTube. First, I just wanted to remind everyone that the City Hall phone number is going to be changing to 864-531-0644. That's going to be effective August 13th at 1:00 p.m. We have put out a press release. We've placed notices on residents' roll cards. We put it in our August newsletter. I will say that the old number, ending in 4421, will be forwarded to this new number for at least a month or so. But I do think that the new, the new menu that residents get when they call will be much easier to get who they're actually after. I wanted to let you know that our municipal complex, which we've received some state and potential federal funding for, we're in the process of developing an RFQ to pick a construction management at risk firm. We're hoping to have a design team contract in front of council by our September council meeting for approval. Only two sounds of summer left. We have BR 385 this Friday, and then we have Ryan Spencer as soon as the Fountain Inn High School Fury Parade is over on the 16th. In our fire department, a couple things I wanted to mention. A, Chief Alexander completed the South Carolina Chiefs Association Officer Academy, which is a great accomplishment. Also wanted to let you all know that he had been deployed in Columbia, dealing with this hurricane tropical storm throughout the state. And we also had Lieutenant Garrett and firefighter Dixon. They had been in the city of Charleston assisting since Monday, and then they have now been assigned to Dylan. And so we pray for their safety and safe travels back to Fountain Inn when this is all over with. As far as Fire Station 3, we're still awaiting two more readings of a county council ordinance approval to help pay for half the Fire Station 3. In our police department, wanted to let you know that from a staffing perspective, the major position obviously is filled. You met him tonight. We had one certified officer and one recruit who started on July 29th. They were here tonight as well. We have two recruits who have start dates of August 19th. And so we still have three uniform patrol vacancies, even with those filled. But we have three candidates in the background process stage, and so if all three of those were to make it through, we would have full staffing for our Uniform Patrol Division, which is a great improvement. Natural gas, wanted to let you know that our natural gas employees have had an average of 20 hours of training per employee year-to-date. And then also, as of August 1st, we rolled all of our three separate meter reading cycles into one cycle, and so far, I think it's working okay. Our in-the-zone zoning ordinance and land development regulations update, we have committee, community meetings coming up this Thursday, August 15th, from 6:00 to 7:30 at the Activity Center. A presentation will be at 6:30. And then for those that can't come that evening, we also have one on Friday, August 16th, from 8:30 to 10:00 a.m. in the morning, also at the Activity Center. Presentation at 9:00 a.m. In our recreation department, flag football games begin on September 2nd. Tackle football games begin August 19th. Volleyball registration is ending soon, August 13th. Our Miracle League registration is ongoing through September. And then this summer, we had several basketball summer camps. We had over 40 participants with a focus on fundamentals, skill development, confidence building, fun, and engagement. Chamber of Commerce has their Chamber Night at Flor Field on August 21st. They have a $5 ticket offer if you're interested. And then, as Debbie alluded to earlier, this is the last weekend of Motown, the music of Motor City, August 9th and 10th at 7:30, and then the 10th and 11th at 3:00 p.m. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Bell. Any questions or comments from Mr. Bell? I just want to say thanks in advance to our events team for our great sounds of summer and farmers market season. I've heard really great things. I know we had some transition issues with the stage not being done quite on time, but we got through it. Thank you for all of your hard work there. And then lastly, Mr. Rice, did I read correctly that we're at 1,000 participants now in our 55-plus?
Yes, sir.
I just, wow. Thank you for all the hard work. I know that's a lot of work, but I know that everyone loves it. So thank you so much. There being nothing else, we'll move on to unfinished business, which is second and final reading of ordinance PZ 2024-03, 1314 and 1318 North Main Street. Mr. Bell?
Thank you, Mayor. This ordinance on second reading would rezone two parcels, approximately 3.49 acres, from C2 Commercial to Flexible Review District. The applicant's proposing to build a three-story climate-controlled self-storage facility at the rear of the site, and a three-tenant retail office building at the front of the site. Planning Commission voted 7-0 in favor back on February 22nd. The property is part of our comprehensive plan designated as commercial mixed-use. Access to the site will be provided by a ride-in, ride-out configuration from North Main Street. Parking will be provided in front of the retail stores and in front of the storage facility. A 10-foot landscape buffer with screening will be provided along all property lines adjacent to a residential zone or use, and an eight-foot roadside buffer will be provided along North Main Street. The site is designed to comply with the commercial design standards that apply to our C2 zoning district. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Bell. I'll make a motion to approve on second and final reading ordinance PZ 2024-3. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Clemmer. Any questions or comments?
Just a quick comment. Thanks for, developer, for really working with us to get this looking the right way. Councilman John Don for your efforts in helping it. This is going to be a big improvement to our entryway into the city. It's a really nice-looking facility. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clemmer. I agree. For the sake of not replicating, ditto to Mr. Clemmer. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. Next up is new business, first reading of ordinance AXZ 2024-04, annexation request Durbin-Jones and Happy Valley Roads. Mr. Bell?
Thank you, Mayor. This ordinance would annex approximately 69.35 acres on Durbin-Jones and Happy Valley Roads into the city limits of Fountain Inn, zone it to PD Plan Development, and assign the parcel to Council Ward 3. Planning Commission voted 5 to 1 in favor of the annexation and zoning on July 25th. Several people spoke during the hearing, concerns expressing impact on schools, traffic, road conditions, neighboring properties. The parcel will be, would be developed to provide single-family detached homes at a density of 2.8 dwelling units per acre, as well as a 10.82 commercial development parcel. Road improvements would accompany the development. Our comprehensive plan identifies this area as a neighborhood center, as well as a low-to-medium-density residential, which says the density should be less than four dwelling units per acre for a gross density. The proposal includes a single, includes single-family residential homes along with this 10.82-acre commercial development component. The single-family portion of the development will consist of one-to-two-story homes using brick, stone, and/or hardy plank. The developer will be installing a pedestrian trail in addition to traditional sidewalks that would wind throughout the neighborhood. The concept plan indicates that the main amenity area will provide a pool, cabana, restrooms, fire pits, playground, as well as some pocket parks. The included traffic study recommends that the residential portion will require an eastbound turn lane, and that the commercial phase would require an eastbound turn lane and a westbound turn lane on Durbin Road accessing the site. It's also recommended that a traffic light at Durbin and Jones Road with an eastbound turning lane onto Jones Road. The future land use map in our envisioned comprehensive plans indicates that this area for the commercial portion of the project as a neighborhood center, the map indicates that the remaining area is low-to-medium-density residential. This designation suggests densities of less than four dwelling units per acre. The proposed statement of intent indicates the residential portion to be 2.8 dwelling units per acre. And as a comment to one of the comments earlier, we did receive word on Jones Road from SCDOT that the revised completion date for resurfacing Jones Road is April 30th, 2025. They anticipate work beginning next year.
Thank you, Mr. Bell. We'll go ahead and get this on the floor for discussion. I'll make a motion to approve on first reading of AXZ 2024-4. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mr. Don. Questions and comments from council?
Well, I have several concerns.
Mr. Bell? Yeah, Mr. Clemmer.
Many have already been addressed tonight. I do not feel like this is balanced growth and development, conserving our natural resource conservation as stated in our comprehensive plan. I also appreciate Mr. Bell getting back to me in regards to what kind of strain this will put on sanitation and fire. I'm really not sure about the police department. We had 165 homes out there, and we've got traffic problems. So I don't need to go own and own, but these are some questions that I would like more information on.
Any questions or comments? Mr. Garrett?
I'm with Mr. Phil on this. When I ran for office, it was with control.
You got to use your mic. Do it.
Can you hear me now? But I'm not echoing Mr. Phil, but when I ran, it was for control growth, and I feel, especially with the commercial aspect, the traffic down there, I've got a lot of concerns.
It's two homes per acre. Is that what you said?
You're going to have to use the mic and jam, I think.
Sorry. What?
Three homes per acre, wasn't it?
2.8.
The proposal submitted to the city of Fountain Inn has an overall density of 2.8 units an acre.
But what size are the lots? I know there's, are they leaving a lot of green space, or are the lot sizes, what size are the lots per home?
The lots are usually, when I was looking at it, 53 in the front and back, so probably about 7,500-ish, maybe, maybe you're getting to 8 and change.
So they're going to be small lots with a lot of green space left over?
Yes. Yeah, yeah.
So they're not R10, R12, they're more like 7?
It's smaller than our, our.
It's a, it's a density, yeah. To answer your question bluntly, yes.
Yeah, on the individual play, yeah.
Yeah.
And the commercial, I rode out there the other day. I believe with the road situation out there and people actually traveling out there at the commercial, it's going to be a mess. Those roads are not made for, I mean, you're going to start widening roads all the way back on Gulliver. And I don't see DOT doing that right now, especially Jones Road. I know you said April next year, but that road's still not wide enough for all the traffic that's going to be through there, in my opinion. So right now, I need a lot more information. Like you said, sanitation, police, fire. Fire's going to cover it anyway. I'm sure it's going to be in our fire district, but.
But how many more firemen do we need to hire?
Exactly.
How many more trucks do we need to buy?
Yep, sir. Unincorporated Lawrence County is not in our fire district.
That is not.
No, they have the volunteer out of Gray Court.
Really?
Okay.
Well, that's a scary thought in itself.
Yes.
Well, do they request mutual aid?
Yes, we have mutual aid with them, though. But we don't have, we don't have an FSA like we do with Greenwood County. The call doesn't come to us first. Yeah.
I, for one, do not like the idea of having commercial down there at all, period. I mean, North Main Street, I can name probably six parcels or buildings that are abandoned or up for sale for commercial that aren't being used. I don't, I don't, I don't see a need. I'm not going to travel down there for commercial, for anything. I drove in there last night down Jones, down Jones, and you have to dodge potholes and hit, I mean, and oncoming traffic to not hit the potholes. And unlike, like Jason, unless they do some major renovations down there, it's a, it's a no-go for me.
Mr. Don or Mr. Sam?
My concern is the commercial as well. With it being rural, it's hard to justify that at the moment.
Yeah. At the risk of repeating what's already been said, I do think the extent of the commercial is a big concern to me. I fully support what we have in the comprehensive plan to have neighborhood centers. I think that that's an innovative approach where we have modest retail, modest commercial throughout the city, sort of decentralizing that. I don't consider the scope of this commercial to be modest. I think something in excess, at least at one point I read somewhere about 60,000 square foot of retail was quoted in one of the documents. So that, that's a concern to me, just the sheer size of the retail component covering the approximate 10 or 11 acres. I do have a concern over this, the lot sizes as well. I know that this is a really, I actually really like the neighborhood, to be honest. I really like the design, I think, and this is a credit to Full Tea Homes. This is the kind, you know, y'all are the kind of builders that I really would love to have here in Fountain Inn. I think the features of this community are wonderful. I mean, we've already, we've already heard them. I think, I think having some commercial in a walkable distance to residents, I think that's a very attractive thing. It'd be attractive for couples and families of all ages. I don't think that this community is appropriate for that area.
It's not the right area.
Yeah. And I think, as I think about that area still being largely country, largely rural, I'd like to see more of a transition from being in a city, city-like density, and then moving out into more country, more rural. I know it's changing. I know that there's other developments that are happening under Lawrence County, Lawrence County processes, but that's not us. And I think if I'm being asked, if we're being asked to consider this, I'd like to look at it through our own lens rather than what Lawrence County might be doing. I also, and I appreciate, I had an opportunity to meet with some of the Full Tea Home folks, and like I said, they're great people. I really, I'm actually honored that they would be looking at a place like Fountain Inn to do work, because y'all's quality and your work is really good. Had a chance to look at some of the other projects. I've also had a chance to look, speak with Mr. Ashley Riddle, and I think of him sort of as representative of that area, and he's conveyed some concerns to me. When we were developing the comprehensive plan, I don't usually divulge private conversations, but I don't think Mr. Riddle mind us. When we were developing the comprehensive plan, he had conversations with a number of us. We had lots of community input and engagement. I'm very proud of that. But he specifically asked me about the, the way that the, our map, our future use map characterized that area. And granted, it was on his side, his and, and his wife's side of the, of Durbin Road. But we extended and we tweaked a little bit to reflect a little more of the conservation overlay, and I, and he appreciated that, and I, and I think that was a good collaborative effort. Obviously, that's not reflected on this side of the map. But I do think we should keep in mind the spirit of what we were intending, or what I was intending at least, when I was advocating for extending that conservation overlay, which is just a realization. is just a realization that it is still largely rural, it is still farmland, it's still agriculture, open space. And so I would prefer to see the lots be significantly larger. I know that, and I don't want to get ahead of the mayor because he's certainly the procedural expert, voting this down sort of ends the consideration process for a good period of time, as I understand it, versus if we have an opportunity, if, if it's a consensus to speak more about it and, and table it. So, you know, I, I don't know what the, where folks are feeling on this, but those are some of my big concerns. I don't know if they are correctable, but I think it's fair for everybody to know sort of, at least where I stand and sort of if they are issues that can be overcome.
Was there a, a question about, that I can answer on the, on the reconsideration of requests from code?
Yeah, so if we.
So when city council shall have denied a request for an amendment, it shall not consider the same or a less restrictive reclassification for an amendment affecting the same property until one year from the date of the previous denial. A more restrictive classification is not subject to the one-year period. If an application is withdrawn at the request of the applicant after such time as, after such time as the application has been legally advertised for public hearing, it shall not be considered for, for an amendment affecting the same property for six months from the date of withdrawal.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Don. I've got a couple of thoughts too. I'm gonna try to be, I'm gonna try to be brief because I also think there's some pretty important stuff that I wanna frame it, give some good base level to it. And then I've got four primary concerns of my own that I, that I wanna articulate. But first, I want to thank our staff and our planning commission for the work on this. Their job is to ensure that what's presented to us is in line with the materials that we approve for them. So I want to thank Jason and Nikki and Dean and Sean and our planning commission for their work on making sure that what we have before us meets all of those specifications. And I know that's, that's a lot of meticulous work, and I greatly appreciate it. I also appreciate the use of plan development for this zoning. It's a type of granular review that's not even an option in Lawrence County because they don't have zoning. Requesting a PD, I feel like is the start of a conversation between the property owner, the applicant, and the city of what do we want to see on this property? We get to say a lot of things. We get to restrict or approve a lot of things. We just saw, we just approved on North Main Street about, what, four or five months of going back and forth and getting to a product that we feel like reflects that character. So I appreciate that. One caveat to the PD, though, PD zonings require commercial to be a part of their, the proposal in the zoning classification. So it'll be, it'll, will be procedurally hard to strip commercial out of this, carte blanche if, for instance, Mr. Don, if someone, yeah, sorry, you were nodding at me first. That's why I pointed you out. Wanted to amend, amend the map in, in some way, the proposal in some way. So there is a technicality to there. It would result, if you strip commercial, in more homes. So I do want to acknowledge that means more homes and more cars. So does commercial. Don't worry, I've got some concerns coming, so I'm just laying the groundwork here. I think PD and FRD are the only two that we have that give this level of review, and without those, we would have some, our hands tied even more on what we could fine tune in a proposal. So I do appreciate that. I do think commercial could happen on this side of Lawrence County if the property is subdivided, and now you're dealing with two parcels that have, and they, without a lack of C2 zoning at all, then you're left with any commercial use at all, under the sun. The proposal in front of us greatly limits the types of commercial, again, I'll have more of that in a second, though, that, that would be available to it. Talking about our future land use map, we adopted it in March as part of our comprehensive plan. This property kind of is split between medium to low density as well as neighborhood center, which, to shorten it, is defined as a bunch of things, including small-scale retailer grocery stores, service, and limited office uses that are typically less than 30,000 square feet and onward. I don't believe this scale of commercial is in, is inside of that intention. I think it's outside of that intention. However, it's important to note that the concept of commercial overall is part of the comprehensive plan touching this property. So hence why staff and planning commission sent it on to us with those, with those recommendations. I also think this project is caught between the difference between open space and lot size and cluster developments, to your point, Mr. Thomason. Our code permits someone to do a cluster development, which means you get to reserve a bunch of green space, which is really great. That's prioritized in our comprehensive plan. We all want more green space. In trading that, you get smaller lots, but you get to use the whole property to make that calculation of 2.8 units per acre. And so there is this kind of tug and pull of clear cutting versus conservation of open space. If there was no, if there was no open space cluster development, you would see a lot more mass grading, you would see larger lots, but you wouldn't see as much protected green space. So I think that's, what you're seeing here is what is technically permitted in our code and in our comprehensive plan process, and there's a picture on our comprehensive plan of, of a cluster development and a not cluster development. And overall, and overwhelmingly, people wanted that cluster development, that, that structure. I've got more on that in a second, though, don't worry. My four concerns, though, are with this. One, I think the use, the list of uses allowed in commercial, I think, are outside of the stated intentions. So my request of the developer, when they think about this project, is to, to work with us on what uses could be permitted. If there were to be commercial, what uses could be permitted? That would be less, that would be more restrictive and have a lower impact. I think neighborhood center is intended to be, you know, you're going to get a cup of coffee, you're going to the dentist, it helps alleviate the pressure off of our primary commercial corridors so that we don't end up with another Fairview Road or Woodruff Road, not to knock our sister cities, but that, that, it's a way to help, help preemptively plan for that. So I think, I, I think I'd like to see the statement of intent, of intent reflect a lower-impact commercial if that's, if, if they would still like to provide for a commercial. Also agree that the lot sizes are too small. I don't think, while I, this is not the developer's fault, they're allowed to do this, this, this cluster development to this size. I think there's a problem with our code that I hope to fix in our rewrite, which we're in the, we're in the process of, where you don't get to cluster your way down to No Yard, that you don't get to go into a rural area and, and do cluster development and end up with a, with the practicality of a, of a very small piece of property for your house. There's a floor to that mechanism. Again, they're working within what we provide them, so this is not a knock on, on the Polte Group at all. It's, it's, it's us. So I would love to hear feedback from them in a response to us at some level of what can we do about lot size and see what's possible before we make a final, like a final determination, personally. The third one, I think we need, and I mentioned this to the Polte Group as well, an increased buffer or hard, hard fencing for, to protect nearby properties. I think that's important in, in these areas to make sure that that's in the plan and, and is therefore required. And if it's not in there, by the time it comes back to planning commission for final review, they don't get their building permits. That, that's what I'd like to see. And then in fourth, and I think this is not just, this is not a, for, this is toward, for the developer, but also for any developer, I feel like, while we're in this process of rewriting our zoning laws, which will come before us probably in early '25 to mid ' '25, maybe, we'll see. It'll be in '25, whether it's June or March, I don't know. But that we look to the comp plan to read the tea leaves of where we're trying to head with our zoning rewrite. I think this one is stuck between a comprehensive plan that I think articulates our vision pretty well, but is paired with zoning laws that don't necessarily give staff the tools to make sure that that vision is achieved. And so hence why we have more PDs and FRDs as a way to, to massage that. So those are my primary four concerns. I do agree on the infrastructure part two, but I knew that that would be a topic. I do know Jones Road is up. I also know that I did, it's GPATS is the group, Greenville Pickens Area Transportation Study. I sent Mr. Riddle a very alphabet soup email about GPATS and what we're trying to do to make sure that that intersection gets put on the list. And I have the pleasure of serving on that committee, along with fellow mayors and, and elected officials from around the region, and it's a long process. If you've got an hour and a half, I can tell you about it, but we're trying our best on that front too. So to that point. Mr. Don, to your point, procedurally, I think there are a lot of questions from this council that, that before we make an informed decision, I think it's wise for us to have those answers as best we can. And much like we did with the previous item on the agenda, work as hard as we can to see if there's a way to have that vision realized and to have these concerns mitigated as best as possible. And so that, that's what I would, that's what I would like to see, so that the developer has the ability to think about the comments that we've made and the questions. You know, if you have them, send them to Sean and we can get them out, or Jason, and we can, we can work on getting, getting answers to those. But I, I, I think, I, I don't think we're, I'm not necessarily comfortable taking a firm vote on this at this, at this meeting tonight, whether we want to carry that over for the next month, which is something we've done before. We can, we can make a motion to do that, or, you know, tabling will require procedural on the next time we, we want to do that. So that's where my, that's where my heart is at this, at this point. I don't think, I cannot vote yes in its current form. So. Any questions or other comments?
Our motion is to.
Current the motion on the table is, is, is to do it, just because it's, yeah, procedurally, that's what we had to do. So.
Voting note cuts them off for a year.
Correct.
Unless they come back with major change.
Unless they come back with a less, with a more restrictive, and I am, if I'm not, I'm not the attorney, I'm not Sean, but I would imagine this is the most restrictive type of zoning likely, or one of them, and so it probably does kick that out.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Yeah. We won't ask you for, if, unless, does anyone have any other questions or comments about the project before I?
Only because, just in case I don't have another opportunity to speak on this, and at the risk of echoing our mayor, I just, and at the risk of embarrassing our staff and our planning commission, I just, I do want to thank you all, our administrator, Jason, our planning commission, these are great individuals, our planning commission in particular, they're all volunteer. They, they live in our community, they care about our community. I think that they are doing what they believe that they have been tasked to do, and I think they do it really well, and they do it, I have a great deal of respect for them, and I think they do it with a great deal of pride and humility. But I also realize that we have, we have a public, we have folks on both sides of this issue, but on any issue, you have folks on, on a myriad, on the spectrum with myriad of opinions and concerns. I would hope that, just as a community, because we are Fountain Inn and we are still, I believe, a great small community, that the best of us, even when we do have concerns about our livelihood or concerns about property and being able to use it as we see fit, that we can demonstrate our opinions in just a hospitable way and in a way that I think has made Fountain Inn so attractive to so many people and why seven generations of families want to stay here and why people from, that go to move to California and come back want to return here and people that have lived here all their lives want to stay here. So I, I would just, from the bottom of my heart, as, as your neighbor and as somebody who has the opportunity to serve you, is let's just continue to express our opinions even when we are so passionate about it in, in a way that demonstrates respect for one another and that I think can be a shining example to folks, not just in Fountain Inn, but far beyond. And I, I do want to just echo the mayor and just thank our planning commission, thank Mr. Stoddard and the rest of our commissioners for just the integrity and way in which they go about their work and then Jason as well and, and the rest of our staff as they take up these requests and bring them to council with as much information as, as they can give to us. So thank you.
If it's okay with you, I'll, I'll make a motion to, is it okay, just a motion to carry it over within the motion, Mr. K, because Larg, okay, I'll make a motion to carry this over to next month. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mr. Don. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries, Mr. Thomason and Mr. Garrett dissenting, correct? I just want to make sure for the record I got that right. Okay. So we'll take this up next month, ideally with answers to a lot of the questions that were answered. Next up is item number B, which is first reading of ordinance AXZ 2024-05. Mr. Bell?
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance for first reading, which would annex just over one acre on Millacron Drive into the city limits of Fountain Inn, zone it to C2 Commercial District and assign the parcel to Council Ward 5. The planning commission voted seven to zero in favor of this annexation and zoning on July 25th. Nobody spoke at the public hearing in opposition to the request. The parcel is located on Millacron Drive, otherwise known as 418. There's a lot of different road names for 418, and approximately 1,700 feet southwest of Interstate 385. The parcel currently consists of a wooded area and is vacant. The parcel is being proposed to develop into a pediatric orthodontics office. The city's envisioned comprehensive plan identifies the area of this tract of land as commercial mixed use. The applicant ALH Orthodontics LLC, Fountain Inn Pediatric Dentistry and Orthodontics, is represented by Dr. Adam Harden and Dr. Mary Alice Hughes, both upstate natives. They are trying to become the owners and operators of the Fountain Inn Orthodontist. The name of the practice is still pending. They are currently serving the community at different practices around the upstate. Dr. Harden is a practicing orthodontist and Dr. Hughes owns Maverick Smiles, a pediatric dentistry in Malden. They hope to expand this practice with this new development in Fountain Inn.
Thank you, Mr. Bell. I'll make a motion to approve on first reading ordinance AXZ 2024-05. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Clemmer. Any questions or comments? Just want to say, I, I think this is a, this, this will help us further define the character of 418 going that way. I also know in hearing, in having a meeting with, with them at one, at one point, what they're looking at doing, I think, will also help protect that 418 character, that overlay district, even though they don't have to abide by it, they're pretty darn close, and, and it's also, I think, a need for this community. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Next up is appoint Deputy Court Clerk Kelly Santora as Ministerial Recorder.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Santora was hired on June 1st, 2006 for the city of Fountain Inn. She previously worked in our dispatch department. She became our deputy clerk of court on July 31st, 2022. So for those that, that aren't familiar with ministerial recorder, this is, in state law, the council of a municipality may establish the office of ministerial recorder and appoint one or more full-time or part-time ministerial recorders who shall hold the office at the pleasure of council. They shall be certified by the municipal judge as having been instructed in the proper method of issuing warrants and setting and accepting bonds and recognizances. Ministerial recorders shall have the power to set and accept bonds and recognizances, I'm sorry with that word, and to issue summons, subpoenas, arrest warrants, and search warrants in all cases arising under the ordinances of Fountain Inn and in criminal cases. They shall have no other judicial authority. So our current clerk of court is also appointed at, as a ministerial recorder. We feel like having our deputy clerk of court also have that same authority would help in just having a smoother office and, you know, vacations and, and things of that nature. However, in order for Deputy Clerk Santora to even become certified and get her training, she has to first be appointed as a ministerial recorder, and that is the recommendation this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Bell. Any questions? Is there a motion to approve Kelly Santora's ministerial recorder? Thank you, Mr. Garrett, second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Sanders. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Congratulations. We'll move on to item number D. Authorized city administrator execute an agreement with Spartan Fire and Emergency Apparatus for two Pierce fire engines. Mr. Bell?
Thank you, Mayor. For the last several months, Chief Alexander and his staff have diligently worked to identify the appropriate apparatus for their current and future needs. He established a truck committee who worked with Spartan Fire and Emergency Apparatus to, to design and equip two fire engines by Pierce or a pumper engine. Each one costs around $1.1 million for a total of just over $2.2 million. We have to pay for these engines once delivery or final inspection occurs, which is unbelievably estimated to be 45 to 48 months from now. The soonest these two engines would be available is anywhere between May of 2028, which is in fiscal year '28, and September of '28, which would be fiscal year '29. Due to the time it takes to build these trucks and the fact the payment won't be due for such a long time, I'm requesting city council authorize me to execute an agreement with Spartan Fire and Emergency Apparatus. These trucks, from a procurement standpoint, are available through HGAC Buy, which is a cooperative purchasing program of which us and all municipal association members are members of this cooperative purchasing program. The two new engines are slated for headquarters in Station 2. The addition of a new engine at Station 2 will allow us to increase the station staff from two to three or four, depending on the day. The only truck that would be removed from service is Engine 4, which is current. The only truck that would be removed from service is Engine Four, which is currently for sale. It is a two-person cab, which does not fit our department's needs. We would keep both Engine 30 and 30A, which would go to reserve status. These two trucks will be approximately 12 years old at the time of delivery. Current Engine 29 will most likely move to Station Three upon completion. And, yeah, so Engine 29 is a 2012, Engine 29 is from 2007. That's the one that's currently on the market, but we haven't had a whole lot of progress in selling it. And Engine 30 and 30A are both 2017s.
Thank you, Mr. Bell. Is there any questions or comments from Mr. Bell?
I just want to thank Mr. Bell for expanding on that, because I asked all those questions yesterday.
Thank you for asking.
Thank you very much for seeking that information.
Really is amazing to lead time on those right now.
Right.
But they're all custom-built.
Yeah.
So that's the part of the reason.
I've had the pleasure and opportunity of going to the Pierce factory, both in Wisconsin and in Florida, and it is an amazing operation. Still crazy that it takes that long, but it is, it's unbelievable the amount of fire engines and ladder trucks and towers that they are producing at those, both of those facilities. And we, hopefully, will have that pleasure of going down to Florida as well to pick these up, or Wisconsin, whichever.
Does Chief have any idea what we may get out of Engine Four? I mean, it's, I mean, we're talking like $5,000 or-
We have set a reserve on that. We actually have, we have an organization that specializes in selling used fire trucks to other agencies around the country, and we probably, I don't know what that exact amount is that we're trying to sell it for, but we must have it set too high because we haven't had much, much luck in selling it yet.
I'll make a motion to authorize the city administrator to enter an agreement with Spartan Fire and Emergency Apparatus. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Thomason. Any questions further? Hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Next up is first reading of ordinance 2024-7, which is budget amendment.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance for first reading. I know we just recently, as late as, late July, adopted our FY 25 budget. However, at that time-
Late, late June.
Or June, sorry, not July, that would have been, not good, but sorry, June.
For the record.
However, at the time of adoption, we did let you all know that this was coming. We were really waiting on the results of the FY 23 audit, which some of the highlights were presented tonight. So this evening, we have an ordinance to amend our budget for a capital improvement plan totaling just over $9.1 million. 3.9 million of the general fund capital improvements will be funded from a state earmark for building Fire Station Three. So really, the remaining $1.6 million of general fund capital purchases will be funded with general fund reserves. Our gas capital improvement plan totals just over 3.2 million. This funding consists of $1.48 million from our FY 25 operating revenue, which has already been approved. The remaining $1.78 million will be funded from natural gas fund reserves. We also have $231,000 in solid waste capital improvements and $80,000 in sewer capital improvements. Highlight of a few of the items that are included here, $900,000 is slated to assist with the Swamp Rabbit Trail extension going from Heritage Park all the way to Fountain Inn High School. The organization, UGADA, has obtained all of the easements necessary to have that Swamp Rabbit Trail go from Heritage Park all the way to the back of Fountain Inn High School on Halem Street. We have several residential developments that are, including the construction of the trail as part of their developments. They have obtained grant funding from GPATS and others. Their request to the city of Fountain Inn was for $1.8 million, and so we have, we are requesting that we do half of that in this FY and the other half in the following. As we mentioned, Fire Station Three, that 3.9 million, that's coming directly from a state earmark. In the police department, we are including quite a bit of equipment that is absolutely necessary. The ones that I'd highlight here would be an animal control vehicle. We are, that was approved in the FY 25 operating budget for animal control officer, and since that's really a brand-new position for us, we have to order a special vehicle. The other, and I'll get to it in just a second, is a dog kennel, which we have ordered. And that is so that we can get the former Public Works Natural Gas Site ready for a parking lot. And so some of the few things that we're still using that site for is animal control, the dog kennel, as well as that is where our sanitation department washes their trucks. So you will see that we, in solid waste, we have money allocated for a wash bay to have at the new utilities complex. And we also have funds split amongst gas, solid waste, sewer for making the old natural gas Public Works Site a paved parking lot, as well as expanding the existing parking lot at the utilities complex. I believe the building was, it was certainly designed and built with growth in mind. However, even the first day it opened, we realized we were without adequate parking there. And so that is included in this capital improvement budget. As far as the gas department goes, we, Mr. Noriega has a two-phase plan for additional improvements for the north end pressure issues that have occurred. So we have $820,000 there for Phase One. And then also, the South Main Streetscape Project is hopefully going to be bid out soon. All we need is, we've already identified a power easement from a property owner. Once that is obtained, it should go out to bid. But we have decent amount of gas lines on South Main that are going to need to be relocated, and so that is also included in this capital improvement plan. There, we really just needed to get this going for first reading. By second reading, which we will also have to have public notice and a public hearing, just like the normal budget process. We may have a few other items that we need to add to this or take away. There just might be a few modifications, but as far as getting this process going for first reading, I think this is a good list of a capital improvement plan for FY 25.
Thank you, Mr. Bell. Is there a motion to approve on first reading ordinance 2024-7? Thank you, Mr. Sanders. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Blackstone. Any questions or comments? I just want to note, I think, I forget where it was notated, but our reserve balance is at over 40%, a little, a little over 40%. Our requirement by our own code is 20%. We're well above, this is, this is what reserves are for in many ways, and plus the capital budget that's already kind of folded into the actual budget itself. So thank you for prioritizing these. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. We have no need for an executive session, which means we want to adjourn. Is there a motion to adjourn? Thank you, Mr. Garrett, second. Thank you, Mr. Sanders. Any questions? All is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We stand adjourned. Thank you.